Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Danny, would you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Excused.
Councilmember Trout-Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Wales.
Here.
Thank you. All right. We have no announcements, proclamations, or presentations this evening, so we will move -- well, excuse me, we have an appointment. So next on the agenda, White River Valley Museum City Council to confirm the appointment of Leroy Jones to the White River Valley Museum Board for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2020. Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Baggett.
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Holman.
Second the appointment.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Yes, this will be a appointment for the White River Valley Museum Board, appointment of Mr. Leroy Jones, which be a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2020.
Thank you. And I believe council all had access to his information, to his application, for the past week or so. All right. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the appointment of Leroy Jones to the White River Valley Museum Board for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. All right. I don't believe we have any agenda modifications this evening, so we will go to public hearings. Tonight, we have a public hearing on the 2018 Stormwater Management Program Plan. City Council to hold a public hearing to accept comments on the draft 2018 Stormwater Management Program Plan, and we do not have a staff report this evening, so I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this topic? Is there anyone that would like to speak on the Stormwater Management Program Plan for 2018? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and move to audience participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the city council on any issue. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided, and please give your name and address for the record, and limit comments to three minutes, please. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Yes, please, please come forward.
Hi, my name's Betty Brown, and I live at 2516 Ice Street Northeast, 105 Auburn, Washington, 98002. And I've been here before, and today I just want to bring a report that the homeless person, Barbara Jane, she's in a shelter now in Seattle, so I wanted to bring this to the plate, that I've been working with this young lady, and she's not doing real good, but she's in a place today. And I just want to say thank you for me having the opportunity to come in and let you guys know that. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Betty, for giving us an update. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, gentlemen in the back, and then we will have our Cub Scouts after.
Good evening. My name is Demi Trunko, so I live in 6210 Nathan Avenue Southeast in Washington, here in Auburn, 98092. So the reason I'm here today is that some of you have read an email that I send the council and the mayor's office. I'm here representing the boroughs of Auburn, and some of us are here today, and if you're here today, please raise your hand. So last year, we have some discussions with you in public meetings, and we provided some information, and you guys decided as a body to enact a resolution for an all-inclusive city. The assertion at that time was that you will take -- that will allow the city the flexibility to take steps in which to accommodate what the resolutions say rather than ordinance. So the reason that I'm here today is just seeking out information. We asked for a meeting, nobody has responded except Councilmember Brown. Thank you very much for responding and accepting our invitation to meet with us. We just want to be here on the public forum saying that we would like to meet with you and find out what the city is doing at a time of your convenience within the next couple of weeks. I do appreciate your time, I appreciate all the work that you've put in, and looking forward to hear what the city have done in support of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Ma'am, would you like to -- yes.
Hi, my name is Darren. I live in 1424 58th Way Southeast, Auburn, Washington, 98092, and I am here with other members of PAC 432. We below den, we would like for the city councillors looking into using renewable energies such as wind turbines, solar panels, and water turbines to power government buildings and to lessen Auburn's impact on the environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Nicely done. And did you give your last name, Danny? Do you need his last name as well? Is his last name on the sign-up sheet? Okay, perfect. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Nicely done. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Mary Miller. I live at 1802 Ice Street Northeast, Apartment B in Auburn. The reason I'm coming forward is that as much as the city is trying to stay on top of all the trash on the streets and people throwing their garbage around, is that we really need the community to kind of step up to the plate and use the trash cans, not the sidewalks, you know, bus stops, especially kids' bus stops when parents are waiting and stuff like that, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you, lady. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Bless you.
Yes, my name is Bob Zimmerman. I live at 33029 46th Place South in Auburn. It's just astounding that I even have to come here and do this. I'm wanting to speak about seismic standards and building code enforcement, and of course it is about this concrete wall that stands on top of the ground, and the city refuses to even consider the evidence that it is still deficient. And the fact that it was probably, well, I won't say that, but anyway, whenever I talk to anybody about this, I ask my 91-year-old mother, she's an RN, retired RN, and she can't believe that the city of Auburn would allow such a thing to even happen. I ask my 11-year-old grandson, can you build a wall on the -- on top of the ground like this? And he says, well, no, you got to anchor it into the ground. Well, how would you do that? He doesn't have any idea. He's only 11 years old, but he sure knows better. You would certainly think that these, what do you call them, supposedly highly credentialed and trained professionals would have some kind of an idea, but they haven't yet. And I suppose you wonder why I do this. Well, in 2015, we had that quake over in Nepal, and they were having chunks of rock and concrete and whatever they're building things with over there being relocated by a quake that was about an eight, and we're going to have at least a nine, which will be at least 33 times more energy release than that. So I thought, well, I better get on the ball and get something done about this while I still can. So I hired an engineer to do the evaluation, and they wrote a correction notice based on the engineer's evaluation, and didn't meet seismic, didn't even meet wind load for that matter. And of course, that was botched too, and I've told you about that before. So anyway, it is just absolutely beyond my comprehension that I have to come down here and plead for some kind of sanity, code enforcement, common sense, and we have this -- now, I'm going to run out of time again. So anyway, I would hope that at some point in the future, we will see some compassion and some humanity come forth that will actually realize that the people that get smashed in earthquakes are going to be just as injured, their blood just as red, their bodies just as dead as those that get shot, those that get smashed in car wrecks by negligent drivers, drunk drivers hit and run. You know, all these negligent acts should be punished at the same level. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Excuse me, one last time, is there anyone else that, please come forward, give your name and address for the record?
Hello, my name is Derek Seiver. I live at 2 East Main Street Apartment 516 over there in the Trek Apartments, and I just wanted to bring something up about the recently burned building that's there on Main Street between, next to the Safeway. I was talking to some of the businesses over there, like the Teriyaki Restaurant, and I asked them, I said, if this building was to be rebuilt, and do you think you would get more business if there was maybe more than just one bar in that little area where the nice brickwork is, where there are some plants and some benches and stuff? And they said, yeah, probably. And I was just, I just thought it'd be a very good opportunity if, I don't know how zoning-wise, if it could be encouraged or possibly required when the building does get rebuilt, that there is like restaurants or something like a bar in that area. I think that would be a very good use of the space if there was like, instead of the nail salon, you know, and then there's kind of like, I think, just a blank wall, and then the bar. But if you had just like a couple bars, you know, I noticed over at the Spunky Monkey is very lively at night, and I feel safe walking by the Spunky Monkey night because there's so many people that go out for a cigarette, they, it doesn't look like it gets too rowdy, and I think it's a very good public space. Maybe you would get, if it was lively-er at night and with law enforcement, you know, patrolling the area, it would create a good environment for just kind of good public activity going on, maybe even a street musician or two during the day when the weather's nice. So I wanted to say that. And also, the area that has some benches and some chess tables next to the Trek Apartments, just on this side, between here, between the gravel lot and the Trek Apartments, there's kind of a, just this empty space that doesn't really get used, and it was really nice in the summertime to see some food trucks there. And I sometimes go down to Portland, and they have areas that are always food trucks. So they have food trucks there 24 hours a day, you know, they close up, you know, they get patrolled, and I've noticed that they create a very nice, safe civic area where people hang out. And I think if, I talked to the taco truck that's over there on the, by the Shell Station across the street from the Safeway, and I asked them about that, and they said they can't, they can't park there all the time, they can only get their license, you know, right there by that gas station. And I think that that's a real opportunity, if there is something that could be done to have something like permanent food trucks, taco trucks, all the time. It would create a really, it would encourage positive use, and it would be used for things other than what's being used for now, which is sometimes less desirable, especially at night. So I just think a good opportunity for some good civic space to be used there. That was my opinion. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are waiting for the Heritage Building for the owner and the insurance company to come to some type of an agreement on what can be done with that building or what the insurance company will pay out. That's not in the city's, excuse me, authority right now, although if they take too much time, it will be in our authority. But we agree with you, we would like to see some vibrant new structure come out of that place.
Will be the same businesses there as previous?
Most of those businesses have relocated, many of them still downtown or will be relocating, so that's the positive news, and hope to attract new businesses when the building is either built up as it currently is or demolished and rebuilt.
Okay. And is there any way zoning-wise to have businesses in that little area with the brickwork between the Teriyaki shop?
There is possibility of that, sure.
Okay. And also, I wanted to bring it up, I've been out of town for a week, so I don't know if it's gotten fixed or not, but the light right there in the Safeway apartment right by that burned-out building has been out for a long time, it's just a dark area.
You're talking about a?
The streetlight.
The streetlight on Main Street, or is it on the backside?
On the backside, between the Safeway and that burned structure. It's a very dark area that does not feel safe to walk in, and some, I've seen, what I do see happening out there is not something I want to walk by or have my wife walk by, so.
So thank you for letting us know that, we'll make sure to get that one taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Final time. All right, we will close audience participation. Danny, do we have any correspondence this evening?
No, Your Honor.
All right. Counsel ad. What? Public sidewalks.
In support of?
Oh, okay.
It was sent to all of us.
Oh, okay. Counsel, you probably received an email from the master builders in support of ordinance number 6672 relating to public sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We will move to counsel ad hoc committee reports. Counsel ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the city council if any. And we currently have two ad hoc committees, the finance committee, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. The finance ad hoc committee met and we reviewed the finances and payroll, and we can report that 112 claims, vouchers, and six wire transfers were accomplished with about $1.1 million affected city payroll consisting of checks and direct deposits from February 15th through February 28th in the approximate amount of $2.5 million.
Thank you.
All items were in order.
Thank you very much. And the streets ad hoc committee, Councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee, Councilmember Trout-Manuel and Deputy Mayor Baggett and myself, met with our city engineer and our couple of directors to review the transportation improvement plan from 2018 through 2023, so a plan for that. So we have been provided with information to kind of digest now and take a look at it, and then we're going to try and get together with the staff every two weeks for near term and kind of figure out some of the direction that we may need to go in or some of the opportunities we may have to look at the projects that are already planned.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Baggett.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Brown.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have four items on the consent agenda tonight. We're looking for approval of the minutes for the regular council meeting held on February 20th, 2018, the minutes from July 25th, 2016, and August 8th, 2016, study session meetings, claims vouchers, and payroll vouchers as explained by Councilmember Brown and with his recommendation for the council to approve.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. We have no unfinished business, we have no new business, we will move to ordinances. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance number 6670, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the renewal and amendment of ordinance number 6452 for ZO Group LLC franchise Agreement Number 12-41 for a telecommunications system.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Holman.
Move for the adoption of ordinance number 6670.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Trout-Manuel.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Now, this is just a renewal with a minor amendment for an existing franchise agreement for a telecommunications system. The amendments are just updated contact information, otherwise it's identical.
Great. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 6670, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Ordinance number 6672, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, amending Chapter 12.12 of the city code relating to public sidewalks.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I agree to have the city council adopt ordinance number 6672.
You just, it was off.
Wasn't on?
No.
I move the city council adopt ordinance number 6672, sorry.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Holman.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is kind of long overdue. The last time this ordinance provided information for the city code related to the maintenance, installation and maintenance of sidewalks within public right-of-way areas was codified in 1957, so we felt that 61 years later was time to amend the code. So this code, actually, if you notice it, if you read through it, there are many, many strikeouts to provide the update, but a lot of new provisions in that code that give us the current standards, what we should do and how we should do it, and information related to local improvement districts, and to allow the city to have no conflicts with the state, and clarification of definition of sidewalks, maintenance, installation, and replacement.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 6672, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Ordinance number 6675, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, approving the city-initiated rezone of four parcels totaling approximately 1.34 acres located east of C Street Northwest between W, West Main Street and Third Street Northwest from the downtown urban center to M1 Light Industrial, and the city-initiated rezone of approximately 0.98 acres located on the south side of Southeast 310th Street, west of 112th Avenue, and southeast from R20 Residential to I Industrial Implementation Comprehensive Plan, and amending the city zones, city zoning maps.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Holman.
Move to approve ordinance number 6675.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown for the second.
Yes, Mayor, I second that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
6675 was discussed at length at our study session on February 26th. It's primarily a map amendment for our comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor of ordinance number 6675, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Ordinance number 6679, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, amending Sections 3.10.020, 3.10.025, 3.10.026, 3.12.020, 3.12.030, 3.12.060, 3.12.070, and 3.12.080 of the Auburn City Code, and creating a new section, 3.10.060 of the Auburn City Code relating to public contracting.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to approve ordinance 6679.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I'll second it, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Thank you. Basically, what this does, it modifies portions of our Auburn code and it, as it relates to purchasing policy and public contracts, revising certain portions of the purchasing contracting code will allow the city to move more efficiently and effectively procure and administer consultant and construction contracts.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Wales.
I need some help again in understanding? Your mic is not on. Thank you. In understanding page two of the ordinance, which would be in our large packets, page I need some clarification on the middle of the page, 3.10.025, where it includes architectural, engineering, design standards, accounting. I have a problem with the word art, real estate appraisals, and the rest, which to me, all appear to be public works projects. So I guess my question is, give me why art is in there, and does this just apply to the public works projects, or does this apply to, say, our parks' ability to go to $50,000?
So I can take a stab at that. The code that's in there related to professional and personal services is not specific to public works only, it's to any professional or personal services that are done for the city. So art contracts, such as commissioning artwork, would be a personal services contract, so this still applies to that process.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Are there any other questions, any other council members, before I go back to Councilmember Wales? Councilmember Wales?
I guess I go back to what I shared at the study session. I don't have any problem increasing it to 50,000 for public works projects such as roads, sewers, water, and whatever, because it's primarily our primary responsibility, and it's all related to safety. In the discretionary fund areas such as Parks Department, I really have a hard time giving away some of our authority to say nay or yea or yes on a Parks project, and so I don't support this ordinance.
So, does anybody want to respond to whether Parks is a discretionary fund or not?
If it would help, and to the extent that it is, this is not a change except to the 50,000.
Yeah.
That language was already there, so all it did was, this section of the code was changed as to that part of it by later on identifying the 50,000 rather than the 25,000 that previously existed for procurement and administration. I don't know if that helps or not.
No. Could you, you're saying that it's not a change, but then again, you're saying it is a change. It's going from 25,000 to 50,000.
That is a change. What, the language that included Parks was not a change that previously existed.
Yes, that Parks was? So this is similar to the fact that the mayor has signing authority up to $50,000. This is not any different than that. This is increasing the amount of which there could be an increase up to the 50,000 mark, which is also within the signing authority of the mayor's office. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney? Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
That is correct. They're now at least consistent in terms of the dollar amounts.
Right. Councilmember Holman.
I'd like to point out that this does not authorize expenditure that isn't already approved by this council. It has to be in the budget. If you look at page 112 in section A, and it must be separately listed in the city's annual budget. So, we've already had one pass at it and approved it. This merely allows the mayor to sign with it. If it were not budgeted, then it would have to come back to the city council. So, it's stuff that we had... Already had a chance to rule on.
Is there anyone else that has a comment? Councilmember Wales.
Point of order.
Councilmember Holman.
Our rules clearly state that on one subject matter that's on motion, one individual has two debates at it. Councilmember Wales has already had two comments on this item.
Mr. City Attorney, do you want... Would you?
I believe the rules do provide a limitation on how many times a council member may speak to a specific item, and in that regard, it's to make sure that everybody... All members have an opportunity. I think that the... Beyond the additional two... Or the initial two times, council would have to voice approval for additional commentary.
Okay.
Per the rules.
Would that be done via motion?
It could be done by a motion. That'd be the typical way.
Okay. Any additional comments? Councilmember Wales.
I just wanted to say, thank you, John, because maybe that's what this one section means on page 113, item B. I wanted to thank you for the clarification as it related to items that are budgeted and not budgeted, and you provided me with great clarification.
All right. Get back to... All right. We will move back to... This is ordinance 6679. Are there any additional comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 6679, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5346, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, setting a public hearing to consider a franchise agreement with Olympic Pipeline Company LLC.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Baggett.
I make a motion to approve resolution 5346.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Holman.
Second.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Thank you. What this does is basically set the date of a public hearing for March 19th, 2018 at 7:00 for the Olympic Pipeline Company for a franchise agreement number 17-22.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of resolution number 5346, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5349, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between the City of Auburn and the Auburn School District relating to a project on South 316th Avenue between 56th Avenue South and West... And W Street Northwest.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Wales.
I move for the approval of resolution number 5349.
Your mic, please.
Thank you. I move for the approval of resolution number 5349.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that.
Thank you. Councilmember Wales.
Thank you. I think that all the Evergreen Heights parents and people up there at the top of the hill who've been asking for some leadership, I'm glad to see that the city is helping with this, to assist with that elementary school's ingress, egress, and parking. This is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor of resolution number 5349, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5350, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, approving the lodging tax grant disbursement recommendation... recommended by the Auburn Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move adoption of resolution number 5350.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Yes. This is a resolution that we have previously studied in study session, and the resolution would approve the lodging tax grant dispersments recommended by the Auburn Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of resolution number 5350, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5351, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, authorizing the acceptance of a grant from King County and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary contracts to accept said funds.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to recommend the adoption of resolution number 5351.
Thank you. Is there a second? Council... Or, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Baggett.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. In my notes here, I said this is a no-brainer. I think it's an excellent idea, this resolution, to purchase mountain bikes, the trailers... The trailer, enclosed trailer, to move the mountain bikes around. This is a great activity for citizens, the young people here in Auburn.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of resolution number 5351, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5352, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, amending section B, engineering, public works fees of the current City of Auburn master fee schedule, adding a new subsection 15 mitigation and impact fees for exempt wells.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I move to adopt resolution 5352.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Holman.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution authorizes the addition of a $500 fee to the current City of Auburn fee schedule for each new permit... Permit exempt well that is constructed after January 2018 within the Auburn city limits. This fee is required by state law, so we are merely just providing the information that would make us whole with state law.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor of resolution number 5352, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. All right. We are now at the point on the agenda for mayor and councilmember reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed position on federal, state, regional, and local organizations, and we will begin with Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the opportunity to attend the manager training here in city council chambers on February 22nd. Basically, this is a program that's set up to... It's a training effort for managers and owners of multifamily housing and others who would benefit by learning about crime prevention, strategies, and community improvement. These training sessions will definitely make our city a better and safer place to live, businesses to thrive, and improve the overall quality of life in our city. It was well-attended, and we were represented by our Auburn finest and the code enforcement folks, and they did a great job of presenting the entire program, and it lasted until probably late in the afternoon. So, that's basically the first item. The second item, I attended the first meeting of the Pierce County Cities and Towns Association. This is an advisory association for Pierce County Council, and we have a new... Due to elections, we have some new people that have now taken the helm of this association. Basically, they've established a... An individual to be the president. His name is... Bear with me here a moment. I'll find it. I haven't lost it. Yeah, I think it's... The mayor of Stillacoom will assume the role of president, and in the meeting, we actually elected a person to be the secretary and chair, and that's Mr. Paul Lovelace, who is the city administrator for the City of Stillacoom. The most important thing here in this first meeting was basically, they're trying to scope for the vision of 2050, and they're preparing a white paper basically to present their ideas for Pierce County to go forward to the Puget Sound Regional Council in many areas about reexamining growth shares associated with the geographies, and the information that would... They would request would be that our city council take a look at these initial inputs that they've provided as a cursory analysis, and provide our comments for... Because we do have a constituency there in the Pierce County area, and we need to probably take a look at this and provide their comments, or our comments to them by about the middle of March. So, I'll be providing copies of this to the council, and we can individually and perhaps collectively make a response. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. On February 21st, along with our transportation planner, Joe Walsh, I attended the King County Regional Transit Committee meeting. Just to give a little background on the RTC, we have a number of members comprising the RTC, including 12 councilmembers in various jurisdictions within King County. Eight of us are voting members, four are alternate members, and the opportunity of those members is to bring things forward to Metro that will help improve their systems, improve their planning, improve their programming. We also have two City of Seattle councilmembers that are members of that committee, and two members of the King County Council with two alternates as well. The main issue that we dealt with at the meeting was to accept the policy report that Metro provides for a program they call Metro Connects, which is their program to provide transportation through the year 2025 in the greater King County area. Now, what's happening with this project is the opportunity for Metro to update their systems, update their network, update their components, and most importantly, update their partnership initiatives where the cities and the Metro staff work together to provide the best needs for each city as we go forward. We're not quite sure how some of those jurisdictions are going to pay for those things with the financial limitations they have, but at least we have the opportunity to begin the conversation. So, the motion that was made was to approve that policy... Policy report, which we did, and allow Metro to go forward with that. We also received a lot of briefings at the... At these meetings, and this particular one, we received two briefings, one on the transit fares, which is being updated as we speak, constantly to kind of give us a break for those who ride the bus to Metro. And the most important one is the parking update, which includes all of our parking rides throughout the King County. Some of the parking rides are filled to capacity, some are not even hardly used, and the programming that Metro is linking at is finding a better way for people to utilize those, including if they're... The parking rides are not continuously used, or there's vacant spaces, allowing single occupancy drivers to purchase permits to allow them to park in the space as well. They're also adding those parking rides throughout the county, so we'll stay tuned and see how far we can get with that. It all depends upon the funding, the financing that's available, and how quickly Metro can move. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
I have no report tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
No report, Your Honor.
All right. Councilmember Wales.
Thank you. No report.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I didn't think I have one, but I'm going to give one on domestic violence task force committee. We met on February 22nd, and we met all the new electives that are on there. There was 13 of us, and our prosecutor attorney, David Martin, the senior prosecutor... Deputy prosecutor attorney for King County, he had a keynote speaker to talk to us about domestic violence within our employment. And basically, the gentleman talked about what we... The training that the council has gone through about staff and council members, and just reviewed what we should do and what we shouldn't do, and he gave a lot of details on how some women, some men are being approached within the businesses, and a lot of them are afraid to report it due to their... Losing their jobs and everything, because some of the people that are doing the approaching are either their directors or their bosses. So, it was really an eye-opening to hear some of these people stand up and talk to us. Then, deputy... The senior deputy prosecutor attorney, Dave Martin, invited us upstairs to the fourth floor. They redid the whole... One whole section of the courthouse into a welcoming space for families to be able to go and take their children in there if they have to go to court and they don't feel comfortable because they can't be in a space, to be able to speak about what happened and what they're going to court for and everything. And they call it Ellie's Place, and Ellie is a dog. And on this floor, they have three dogs that come in, and they'll go in the rooms with the children, or it's from... The ages are from six to 15, 16 years of age that can go in there with their parents, with their attorney, and they'll go into a room, and they can tell what, you know, what happened to them without having anybody interrupting them, and they'll take down their statements, and they'll, you know... It's really a welcoming environment. They have like about six different rooms, and they have the council clerk with the child, and then they have the police officer on the other side, and they have cameras where this... Youth can feel safe and comfortable being able to talk, and they have the dog there with them, and that was really nice to see these dogs being there. And as you walk in the door, everything's pretty secure, but you walk into this door, it's got little balls bouncing like this, and the balls direct you to the different rooms, and then they have Ellie, the dog, that they named this whole floor. So, anyways, it was really nice. We all got to walk through there. Then, we had Dell Constantine, and also our... Our mayor, not our mayor, the city... The Seattle mayor be there, and they talked about how they were so excited about finally opening up this floor so that the youth could be able to go there and feel welcome and be able to tell their story without being intimidated, and the outcome is going to be really nice. I'm really looking forward to hearing how it's going to be working, but it was really nice to see them cut that ribbon. The foyer of the courthouse was jam-packed. You couldn't even get in and out of the elevators. If you guys have been up to the county courthouse on the fourth floor, it was just... We were in there like sardines, but I wanted to share that because it was really nice to see something for our youth to be able to tell their stories. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Few items. Last Tuesday... Excuse me. We delivered our annual State of the City address down at the Auburn Avenue Theater. Thank you for the councilmembers who were able to attend, and for those that attended in person in the audience, there were a lot of hits on YouTube and Facebook Live that evening as well, so I appreciate everyone who watched in whatever format they chose, and it is also available on our YouTube station. Is it station, Dana? Is that what I call it? YouTube channel. Thank you. And I do want to give a thank you...
And I do want to give thank you to the team that helped put that all together. Jason Jones, who's in the back tonight taping this meeting, did a great job with all the, with all the video and putting together some fun videos for us. Another dance video this year that included the high schools and some ballroom dancers as well as our police officers, having a little bit of fun to show that there is definitely something to love about our city, and that's what the theme of the, of the evening was, is how to love your city. And so, thank you to Jason and to Kalen Brady and Sarah St. George, Jim Kleinbeck, who runs the theater, Tammy Bothell and Antoinette Manthe, who kept everything running here and helped out that night, and Dana, thank you for your expertise as well. And the next day, we were up in Seattle for One Table, which is the convening that Executive Constantine, Seattle Mayor Durkin, and I have convened on the prevention of homelessness. It is an organization that is coming together, made up of elected officials, of the business community, service providers, philanthropy, and also those who have lived experience in homelessness, to try and come up with out-of-the-box ideas on how are we going to prevent homelessness. And I am always going to be there to remind everyone in the room that it is not just a Seattle issue, and that sometimes it's easier to do something outside the city of Seattle because we don't have quite the amount of red tape or the, the code issues to deal with, and so, I was there to encourage those who have dollars that are willing to spend them to think outside the city of Seattle, and we are looking forward to having some more conversations on opportunities for things to be done right here in the city of Auburn because we have lots of ideas on how we can prevent homelessness and what we can do for our people right here. On Thursday, the first, we said farewell to Linda Ball from HR. She had been with us for 33 years. I don't think most people that work for the city know a city of Auburn without Linda Ball, and so, we wish her great happiness as she decided to retire and join her husband, who retired, I believe, a year or so ago. On Friday night, Councilmember Pelosi and I attended the Valley Regional Fire Authority Awards and Recognitions Banquet, where every year, there is a firefighter of the year and a fire officer of the year. This year's firefighter of the year is Garvase Hansen, and the fire officer of the year is Rudy Pedan, and we want to say thank you to them. They both gave very heartfelt acceptance speeches, talking about how they love the community, which fit right into, to our State of the City and what we are going to be promoting. And so, I just want to say thank you to our first responders who do such a great job of keeping us safe in this city. On Saturday evening, we attended the Terry Home Auction. Deputy Mayor Baggett and I were there, and then I left that event to go to the Christ Community Free Clinic fundraiser, and so, lots of good causes in this community. People were there to help out, to support Terry Home, which is for traumatic brain injury, and Christ Community Free Clinic, which is just over here across the street that provides free health care and dental care for those who may not otherwise have access to the care, and so, I'm always appreciative of the great work that they do in this community. And want to provide two upcoming events. There is one that we will be attending, the Chief Lee and I will be attending the Regional Gang and Gun Violence Meeting at Kent City Hall on Wednesday morning at 8:30 to talk about these, the changes, what has occurred in the last year in South King County, how we have actually made some improvements, and what we will be doing going forward. And then, on Thursday, the eighth, is the Annual Economic Forecasting Conference. I believe several of our councilmembers have signed up to attend that. It's always a great event. We hear from economists who are providing us with a forecast for the year, and they have been spot-on, I believe, Councilmember Holman, for the past several years in their, in their forecasts on growth and jobs, homelessness, a good number of areas, and so, we will be looking forward to that. And with that, Mr. City Attorney, I believe we have need for an executive session tonight, correct?
Yes, we do, Your Honor. We'd like an executive session for pending or potential litigation, and ask that we be joined by Assistant Director Gabb, and I believe that we can do this in 20 minutes. There would be no expected action to follow.
All right. So, I will gavel us to executive session, and we will return, but there will be no action taken at this meeting.